This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 12th. We're at the Metro County Courthouse for a weekly meeting, U.S. on Public Meeting. We have an agenda in front of us. We have a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Your motions are second.
I'll second.
Second. Call or pay your say ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the minutes for March 5th meeting claim. Anybody have any questions on the minutes or the claim?
Rachel, you sent out those corrections, did you?
Yep.
And everybody got those corrections?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Yep.
I'll move to approve the two March 5th meetings and claims.
Your motions are second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Aye.
County Attorney General Discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't, um, uh, this week, I don't, I don't have anything specific to bring up. Questions, compliments, prefer those over criticisms, but, uh, takes criticism too, I guess. But no, I don't, I don't really have anything specific. Um, we've got a fair amount, you know, busy, but, um, nothing particularly to bring up, I guess.
You got a reaction from the crowd.
I know. Yeah. So...
I, I had, I had something come to me about vacated in an alley in Mona.
Yeah.
That was brought up a while back, but maybe I'll talk to you after the meeting about it.
Yeah, that's already, that has been vacated?
No. It hasn't. I mean, he mentioned it once and I don't know. I don't, the ball has dropped somewhere.
Right. It's one, it's one that's been talked about, but never been...
And then the stepmom or whatever passed away and...
Yeah.
It never proceeded, but he wants to get that taken care of.
Um...
So I'll talk to you after the meeting.
So it sounds fine. Like I said, I'll be available.
Be available.
You know?
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. No, perfect. Thank you. Sheriff Hopey.
I don't have an update. Like the county attorney, I don't have much for you this morning. Probably where, maybe, maybe you weren't, we had a load of tires. Some of the tires dumped on the gravel road on 490th Street, so looking into that, hopefully we can get some... What? That's what it looks like.
Yeah. It's like they just raise the box and spread it right down the road.
Yeah, so hopefully we can get some citizens help up that way and maybe somebody sees something that we can move on. Right now, we're gonna have a lot to go on, so...
But to cut them up, they gotta do a little bit of work to cut them off. That's not...
That's right. Yeah, so we have some, um, thoughts on it, but thoughts I can't bring up here. So, anyway, other than that, I still have anything more for you this morning unless you guys have stuff for me.
Did you find out any more about jailing other counties?
Yeah, so currently, uh, Worth County is in negotiation with Cerro Gordo. I think they're more centrally located. If they have problems over in 35 or fertile, the western part of their county, it's quicker to go into Cerro Gordo County than to drive way east to us. However, their booking, um, systems, their computer systems don't match. So there's a Zirka computer system that tracks booking information for inmates and their shield wear. Worth County has shield wear, Cerro Gordo has Zirka, and we have shield wear. So we match up with the computer side of things. Logistically though, traveling to us from the western side, uh, obviously is further. So if that doesn't, if they can't get something worked out with Cerro Gordo County, um, on the booking side and records keeping side, they're gonna come to us. That's where we're at.
There it is.
Yep. Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Apartment head discussion. Anybody have anything for us?
You know, I just, I just wanted to mention that we've got to keep our thing somewhat, or is in the works and we, the board, we don't need to discuss it now, but the board needs to start thinking about what we're gonna do to clean the thing up, if we have to clean it up. We probably will have to clean it up, some of it. And I don't wanna be two days before evacuation time and then we try to figure out what we're gonna do. So we just need to start thinking about what we're gonna do. That's all I know.
Play County Recycling does clean up and, you know...
Yep, that might be very viable.
Yep. They recycle them now and...
Okay.
Maybe, maybe even get it done. I don't know. If there's enough.
That might be perfect, yeah. Just wanna start thinking about it, yeah.
See what's left. Who I would consider.
I say see what's left and that's who I would consider. Because that's the, um, obviously, so, yeah.
I just have one thing. So the, just a reminder, the people in Florida scheduled this Friday. And so if I can have Jim and Todd come at noon and then if you guys wanna come at 12:00 or 12:30, that works for you guys?
Yep, perfect.
Noon for us?
Noon, James or Jim and Todd, and then 12:30, Mike and Mark.
Okay.
County engineer update.
We're picking up tires today. We don't know what we're gonna do with them. Uh, according to the landfill, they take 18 inches and under. I don't know what, because these are sheared and quartered that they'll, we, we called them and I don't think they'll take them, so... There are a few other options, but I think we called North Iowa landfill, they won't take them from us because we all live in Cerro Gordo County. Another option we had, because it's gonna cost about $7,000 to get rid of them, and that's if we truck them. So, we're gonna pull them out of the ditch, put them in our trucks and start trying to figure out how to dispose of them the right way. I don't wanna necessarily landfill them, but it looks to me if they were sheared up the way they were, somebody was trying to recycle them somehow, I don't know. I think they got a excavator tenser that shears them in quarters or whatever and they load them. But everybody that we, when we pick up, say this out loud, when we pick up tires in the ditch, normally they're not sheared up, so we stockpile them. The normal people, the normal companies that pick them up, they just load them and stack easy when they're a complete tire, but... So we're doing that. The contractor, I think, might be working on the second approach set up today with the bridge over by Carpenter and the board going to another spot yesterday. So hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be open up on that. And then, uh, I'm, uh, gonna start fine tuning the DOT budget program for April 15th. Trying to figure out what we're doing with projects from here on out, what form of market money, so... Once I get dug into it deeper. That's all I've got for you this morning.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Set Truth and Taxation Public Hearing?
I'll talk a little bit on it. So this is what used to be the Max Levy Public Hearing. Take that away, they call it now the Truth and Taxation. The other difference is going to be, it cannot be held at a normal board meeting. The only thing that can happen at this meeting is a public hearing, no action or anything is taken after. So I'm asking to do it on April 1st. Um, it has to be, the earliest we can do it is March 25th. But just with our newspapers and stuff, April 1st at 9:00 a.m. Um, and then citizens will also receive, uh, they'll get mailed out by the 20th. What's gonna probably look like a very confusing piece of paper. Um, it's front and back. It's gonna list the schools, the cities, and the counties, uh, the levies on there. So if you have questions, you can give us a call, uh, but basically it's just a notice telling you when our public hearings are.
Our regular meeting has to be done before this?
Um, so if, this will be doing, this April 1st of Monday, um, and then we'd have our regular meeting on Tuesday. And then on Tuesday, we can set the public hearing for the official budget.
Perfect. So I have a motion for April 1st at 9 o'clock, for public hearing?
I'll move to approve April 1st, 9 o'clock a.m., which is on a Monday, to set the Truth and Taxation public hearing date.
Your motions are second.
I'll second.
I was gonna second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Are there any discussion of possible action on Chuck Sportsman's incorporated forgivable mortgage application?
All right, today what I'm looking for is an extension to the sportsman's forgivable mortgage. Um, initially, um, the forgivable mortgage was, um, set to expire on August 9th of 2025, um, but since he, so the project was evidently supposed to be finished in like 2020, and he did just finish it now, I did send out pictures to you guys, um, of the finished kitchen and then also, um, finished photos of the two apartments. Um, last night at the San Anspire City Council meeting, this, um, they announced that they, the city and the state did a walkthrough. They also got some state funds, a state grant for this project. Um, they did the walkthrough with the state and the city and they passed inspection, um, from the state. And I think they just have to get like a ladder that's long enough for the apartments, but other than that, it passed inspection. So what we're looking at is, um, our board, like the MCEDC board, they extended the due date on the forgivable mortgage to February 26th of 2028. So basically it starts over, it's starting over.
What's the reason for four years past due?
So initially, it was four years, like, so initially, like, the mortgage was for four years. And so since they took all this extra time to complete the project, it was a decision that our board made to extend. So they're on the hook the next four years, um, for this forgivable mortgage, which they won't have to pay anything back. Like if they stay there and conduct business, not, they won't have to pay any money back or anything like that, but if they were to go to sell it or something, then they are on the hook to pay back some of those funds, which they did receive $40,650. So, again, they're on the hook for the next four years for that forgivable mortgage.
But that expired in 2020, initially?
Nope. So it initially would have expired August 9th of 2025.
Oh, that's originally when it would have expired?
Yeah, and so now, um, it would expire February 26th of 2028.
Why is it new three more years?
It's four years.
Why? Or if it's about done, why is the...
Because that makes him accountable, I guess, for being on the hook for that forgivable mortgage. So it would have expired and he would have been fine. And so I think just because he took extra time to do the project, like I said, it was supposed to be completed in 2020.
That's what I mean. So he's four years past.
Yeah.
Completion.
Right.
Okay, so what happens if you don't complete on your due date? What's supposed to happen then?
I don't know. I was not here during this program. This was, so it was part of phase one, phase two. I don't know if any of you guys were here.
No.
Um, how I understand it in this file that I have is that the funds were supposed to be released when the project was completed. And I'm not really sure that happened this way in this case. Like maybe people thought it was completed, so they did release the funds, like the forgivable mortgage, like the, the release that I sent you guys. It doesn't really, I didn't find in there where it said if the project wasn't completed, because I think it was, the project was supposed to be completed prior to the release of those funds. Um, so he applied in 19, I think the project was supposed to be done in 20. The release, this forgivable mortgage was, um, signed in 2021.
This actually, uh, this giving him another four years actually benefits us. Yeah, it was late getting done, but this makes him, like, he, if we didn't approve this, he can sell it tomorrow and he never, he wouldn't have to pay anything back. But now he has to hold on to it for four more years before he can sell it. So you see what I'm saying? If he sells, say he sells it tomorrow, he has to pay $40,600 back.
So it was forgiven 25%, so for four years, it was forgiven 25% for each one of those years. And so actually, like, if he were to sell it today, based on like the previous, you know, mortgage agreement, he would actually have to pay back a quarter of that $40,650. So he'd still be on the hook for 25% of it. Now, as we changed it or who we want to, you guys to hopefully support that change, he's actually on the hook for the next four years of the $40,650.
So is this considered a forgivable loan?
Right.
That's what it's called?
Yep. Yep.
Good. So he'll get a 1099 for that money because forgivable loans are federally taxable?
I don't know, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, they are. I know that.
A 1099?
For, for forgivable loan, it's taxable. Like if you have a college school loan or whatever, it gets forgiven, you can pay tax on that because it's a forgivable loan.
I'm not sure.
Is that, that's true, correct?
Uh, yeah, I don't know all the specific details on this, on this, on this specific project. But, uh, so I'm just talking very general, generally, generally.
Forgivable loans are taxable.
If I, yeah, I mean generally, if I have a debt somewhere and it's forgiven, generally that's taxable to me. There might be certain, like if you're dealing with situations like this, maybe it's different. I, I don't know.
Yeah. And then that would be a 1099, correct? I've done some research.
Yeah, I've never had it happen. I am, um, but I guess I've had, I'm just trying to think back. I think, uh, I don't know, I suppose it's 1099 or whatever.
I mean, I've done some research and that's what I, oh, no.
Yeah, right. I think, I think that's what he gives, 1099.
Yep.
So he would have got that when he sent him the check, would he back in 21 or whatever?
Did he get it?
I don't know. I'd have to look in the system, but it usually auto generates over a certain dollar amount, but they give the 1099.
Yeah, over 600.
But then once he gets it and that's on hand, we can't do any more from there.
Right. Then he got the 1099.
Correct.
So he had the money in '20?
I don't remember the exact date. I think it was either '20 or '21.
I think it probably would have been in 2021 just because this mortgage release was signed in 2021. So I'm guessing he would have got the funds when he signed this mortgage release in '21.
Yeah, that's when the project's supposed to be done. Yeah, I don't see it here where it says anything about it. Penalty for being late, it's just, you're not supposed to get paid until you're done, but apparently that happened ahead of time, so...
I don't, I don't know. I wasn't here, so I'm not sure exactly how all that went.
That happened, but...
So it's done now. It's a little bit late.
Yeah.
But we have two more apartments in the county. The kitchen's completed.
Correct. Yes, you're correct. We have two more apartments.
Yes.
Are they rented out?
I'm not exactly sure. He had a renter, he said he had a renter that was looking to rent March 1st. And then I think there was a business that was interested in having it for workers and stuff.
Could, could you look into the 1099 part of it?
I sure can, yeah.
I don't know. Takes care of that, come through.
We wouldn't have given the 1099, so...
It would have came from our office.
Oh, okay. Can you look into that?
I can see what we have for record, yeah.
I just wanted to get a little...
Any other questions or anything?
I guess I'll just add again, I think it was our thoughts in the MCEDC meeting that if we extended this, um, four years, again, basically that was making him hang on to it. And if something happened and he sold it, he's gotta pay some of that money back, which, yeah, I understand that he probably should have anyway because it was late, but it was...
Open in there that says, that has to be paid back. It was late, it shouldn't have been paid till we're done.
Correct, absolutely. So, uh, I, I, that's just my thoughts in our meeting, that, well, let's put him on the hook here to make him keep it, keep it open, run it, rent those apartments. And if he ends up putting it out for sale, then he has to pay some of that money back. It's, it's up to you guys. It's... All five of us, I guess.
Doesn't, doesn't seem to be open during the week if it's about it.
I, I've never been there. I...
Oh. I'll never see it open.
I think they opened like last Friday or if I did before, I can't remember.
Oh.
Any other discussion? I think I know that the city isn't gonna get any more tax income from it for 10 years. They've gotta hold on any increase in taxes, is that right? Know anything about that? Keith, you?
The city, you're not aware of what your state is. Where do you get that information?
Uh, from the county assessor.
The county assessor's not taxing them? Or why?
They've got a deal for 10 years, there's no increase. They made a deal with the city?
For me?
Well, I do. I was just aware of it last week and I looked into it.
That state money's totally separate from what you guys are talking about, is it?
Yeah.
We weren't aware of what they had gone through, you can see on it. But, uh, as of now, he has to produce, um, bills to satisfy the state that all the things that he says he's done, done. And when the bills are produced and the countertop that needs to be replaced is replaced, then the money will be released. They have not released the money yet. They will when he finishes performing what he needs.
Mark, you referring to a tax abatement? Is that what they did?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's Iowa code. I mean, that's legit. You do the, San Anspire has a tax abatement program.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just one more comment on that. So typically, they got the state grant. It was an Iowa catalyst grant. Like typically, when you get those kind of grants, the city must like provide some sort of buy-in to the project. So that's probably where the abatements were offered, just so you know that.
Yeah. When that tenure starts from 2020 or from 2024?
Did Amy know? I mean, she could probably tell you that.
I, I, did he purchase that when, or did he already own it when he started this process?
Well, we owned it.
What's that?
Chuck owned it.
So if it was purchased by him, I believe that's when your abatement starts. It's like buying, you know, a home or any other business. I think it starts when you purchase it. So I, I, I would guess, is it, don't you have, is it a stair step situation or it's old age that way? I think it starts out at, what, 75 or 80 and then stair steps down?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking San Anspire has $75,000 taken off of the total guidance and stacks on that. I thought.
That's the max that we do. We don't do any more than that if they...
Yeah, old ages is different, but San Anspire's $75,000.
Any other discussion? All right, except the motion?
Move to approve Chuck Sportsman's incorporated forgivable mortgage application as recommended by Metro County Economic Development Commission.
The motion is their second.
I'll second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Mark.
No.
Mike.
No.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye. Motion passes. Discussion of possible action on HVAC pay request application 22.
So I want to apologize. I thought this was in the packet. It's not Rachel's fault, it's my fault. Um, so I made copies for everybody this morning. And, uh, this one's marked up considerably because it's the worksheet that I, did I get you this same one, Rachel? Did I get this one? So it's marked up quite good because I checked all the math and stuff, so that's why that's the way it goes. But, um, uh, majority of the construction that we were paying for had to do with materials, labor, AJ Construction. Um, and then, uh, we have a change order request, uh, number seven that is in on this. And that one is the, um, the control room, uh, where we need to put two, uh, different sets in there for heating and cooling and they could be split with two different thermostats that's at that CAR is. So this is for the amount of $20,461.99.
This about wrap it up then or not?
We are at, as far as money wise, we're at the, it's at the top. You can see that we're at 92.90.2% of, uh, financial completion. So, and so actual construction is further along than 90%, but... I was not here when they had the last HVAC meeting and, uh, so I didn't, I didn't get updates as far as at that meeting that, uh...
Looks like we still have a credit of $15,090.50 for change orders.
Correct.
That's, yeah. And I shouldn't anticipate any more, correct?
I don't think so.
Well, there is the one, there's the...
That lighting? Under the stairs?
I think it's exit lights is what we're looking at next. Yeah, I think the lighting is, uh, better. The lighting is something that we, I think we've already approved that one. The exit lights is the one that's on, on the way, I believe.
Is that just one, pardon me?
Was that just one exit light or a couple? No, it was a couple. One in the, one in the, uh, mechanical room so that they know how to get out of the mechanical room. Another one after you go out that door so you can see the stairways and lights up the stairs. So, yeah, there's, there's a few, a couple.
Yeah. Power down. You know, with the generator circuit, that should be, should be much, you know?
Yeah, well, it is what it will be. I don't know what it, I don't, I can't speculate on that, but...
We have a motion for pay address number 22.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is your second.
Second.
Motion's second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, Todd.
Aye.
Jim. Sidney.
Aye.
Mike. Mark.
Aye. Lieutenant, approve reporter's monthly report for February. I have income of $6,788.61. Or $19,000.
I'll move to approve the reporter's monthly report.
Your motion is their second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call, Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Aye. Two motion and second, I'm sorry, what I did, I motion, motion, second. Thank you.
I have some notes. Meetings attended. I had none.
I had none.
Uh, I had a county social service meeting and Angie Van Winkle from Mason City was here. They're planning on building a youth services shelter with 10 beds. And well, it's not really youth, it's age 18 to 24 is what it is. And expect to open that in April. And that's for like substance abuse, mental health, that kind of stuff, so something that's needed in the area, so... So that's gonna be probably beneficial for this area too, you know? Probably the closest one around, but it's always a shortage of that kind of stuff, so... Anyway, that was the only meeting I had.
I was at the same meeting Mike had and I think they said April, is mental health for women this month?
Oh, yeah.
There'll be more coming in April.
I had a fair board meeting that, um, I just did a call in on a few things that they needed, uh... I had a fair board meeting that, um, I just did a call in on a few things that they needed, uh, they didn't give it to me soon enough to, for me to put down my schedule. Forty-five minutes, that was all right, so. Um, and then I went to Statesville City Council meeting last night. Um, had some interesting things, uh, they're looking at a new shop for the, um, city maintenance, um, pickleball court. Talked to them on the urban renewal plan and the dog ordinance. That's it.
Just second ahead, I went to the Wrightsville meeting last, Wrightsville City Council meeting last night in regards to the urban renewal plan also, so, yeah. I got the Statesville City Council meeting also. Okay?
Public comments? And comments from the public? Nothing? During meeting at nine oh one?